Good afternoon, welcome to January 1st, 2018. As you can notice, this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and The Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. We're going to rise first, then signify, and I'm going to sign.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, we're honored to have with us Senator Connors, who will administer the oath of office. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Julie Adams to step out front, have his family come up front so we can swear him into his reappointment as committee man. This is truly Adam Harris for Bud. It's a paper for the Senator to step up front. Go face the camera over there. Yes, yes, go face the back of the camera.
You gotta listen to the boss.
I Nicholas Juliana.
I Nicholas Juliana.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform.
Perform.
All the duties.
All of the duties.
Of township committee man.
Of township committee man.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Support.
Support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I need a motion for mayor for the year 2018. A second. Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
And?
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Well, you need to step down again, and Senator Connors, it's where you wish to be as the position of mayor.
Oh, this is so an exercise.
Especially after a weeknight, right?
Oh, yeah, I didn't do anything.
This is particularly moving for me. Thirty-two years ago today, I was sworn in as mayor by the then sitting senator, my father Lennox, who passed away here this year. So this moment means a lot to me. I'm proud of you, it's I see what's it mean, this day thirty-two years ago. Thanks, buddy. I Nicholas Juliana.
I Nicholas Juliana.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform.
That I will perform.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I'm about to assume.
To which I'm about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support.
To support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of New Jersey.
Of New Jersey.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And faithfully perform.
And faithfully perform.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office of mayor.
The office of mayor.
Of township of Lacy.
Township of Lacy.
So help me God.
So help me God.
for the year 2018.
A nomination to McDonald. A second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Juliana?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Alright, would you like to step down?
I Timothy McDonald. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform.
That I will perform.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office.
The office.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
And which I'm about to assume.
Which I'm about to assume.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
To support.
To support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of New Jersey.
Of New Jersey.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And to faithfully.
Faithfully.
Perform.
Perform.
The duties.
The duties.
Of the office of deputy mayor.
Of the office of deputy mayor.
For the township of Lacy.
For the township of Lacy.
So help me God.
Senator, I'd like to thank you for coming today. Thank you, high on your schedule. It was a pleasure, as always.
Thank you, mayor township committee. Thank you. People of township of Lacy, unlike thirty-two years ago, I get to go home right now.
Mayor, at this time, I'd like us to switch seats and turn the meeting over to you.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, you look good in that seat.
Been a lot of good people in this seat, so I hope to continue on what we do here. I thank everybody for coming, that's number one. Number two, I thank the county committee, who I've worked for in the last few years, and I've learned a lot. And to Veronica, keeping us in check, keeping everything going, I thank you very much. And I look forward to 2018. Thank you.
Not only when he had a handout, you know. So we'll start with number six.
Number six. Resolution 2018 dash oh-one, making various municipal appointments for 2018.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, designating various municipal appointments and assignments for the year 2018. These are the committee liaison positions for the Departments of Finance Administration, Clerk, Collector, Assessment, Treasurer, Planning, Zoning, Code Enforcement. Chair is Mayor Juliana and Deputy Mayor McDonald. Community Social Services Board of Health Local Assistance Board is Committee McCuratolo and Deputy Mayor McDonald. Law and Public Safety, which includes emergency services, municipal police department, is Committee McQuinn and Committee McCuratolo. Department of Public Works is Mayor Juliana and Deputy Mayor McDonald. Recreation is Mayor McDonald and Committee McQuinn. Liaison, beautification committee, is Committee McCuratolo and Mayor Juliana. Board of Educational Liaisons is Committee McKennas and Deputy Mayor McDonald. Economic Development Commission is Committee McKennas and Mayor Juliana. Environmental Commission, which includes illegal dumping task force and legal management, is Committee McCuratolo and Mayor Juliana. Pileins Commission Representative is Committee McQuinn. Library Liaison is Committee McCuratolo and Mayor Juliana. Municipal Utilities Authority, Mayor Juliana and Committee McCuratolo. Senior Services, Committee McCuratolo and Mayor Juliana. Shade Tree Committee, Committee McKennas and Committee McQuinn. Municipal Minds Committee, Mayor Juliana and Committee McCuratolo. American Disabilities Act Committee Liaison is Committee McCuratolo, Mayor Juliana. Solid Waste Advisory is Committee McCuratolo and Mayor Juliana. Veterans Commission is Committee McCuratolo and Deputy Mayor McDonald. Municipal appointments, as municipal tax search officer, Tricia Greco, our current tax collector, and municipal assessment, search officer, myself, Veronica. Motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Next. Resolution 2018 dash oh-one, authorizing the appointment of a township attorney.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of George Park Gilmore Esquire of the firm of Gilmore and Monahan as township attorney. Motion, please?
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash oh-three, authorizing the appointment of a township engineer.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of George Park Gilmore Esquire of the firm of Gilmore and Monahan as township attorney. Motion, please?
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash oh-three, authorizing the appointment of a township engineer.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Michael O'Donnell of O'Donnell Stanton Association as township engineer.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash oh-four, authorizing the appointment of a prosecutor.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Stevens Abarkey as township prosecutor, and Alexander Becker, Morgan Montana, Ronald DeLigni, Robert Greath, Paul Grannick, and Brian Willoughby as alternate township prosecutors. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash oh-five, authorizing the appointment of conflict township prosecutor.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of John Saradnik of the firm of Barry Schradnitz, Coats, and Benson as conflict prosecutor for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Stand.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash oh-six, authorizing the appointment of a township auditor.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Rodney R. Haynes of Holman, Pranier, and Allison as township auditor for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash oh-seven, authorizing the appointment of labor council and hearing officers.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Thomas Cannon, of Karen Cannon and McKenna as labor council and hearing officers for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash oh-eight, authorizing the appointment of bond council.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing execution of a decree of made in Bennett Clark of block Walrath as bond council for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash oh-nine, authorizing the appointment of a township physician.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Dr. John Coolins doing business, urging care now as physician for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Stand.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash ten, authorizing the appointment of a tax map maintenance engineer.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to East Coast Engineering for tax map maintenance. Motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash eleven, authorizing the appointment of special project engineers.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, awarding special project engineers for the township of Lacy for the year 2018. Those engineers are Major Consulting, Elamo Group, Remington, and Varnik CME Group, back consulting to Inte and Associates.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Stand.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash twelve, authorizing the appointment of a township planner.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of John Hess of C M P Associates as township planner for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash thirteen, authorizing the appointment of a township architect.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of Lindo Architecture as township architect.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash fourteen, authorizing the appointment of title search company.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Midstate App Jack Company and Lafayette General Title Agency for title work for the township of Lacy.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash fifteen, authorizing the appointment of appraisal company.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, awarding a contract to Integra Realty Resource Coastal New Jersey and Henry J. Mancini and Associates Incorporated for appraisal work for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Stand.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash sixteen, authorizing the appointment of the director of community development.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Christopher Reed as director of community development for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash seventeen, authorizing the appointment of a recreation director.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, reappointing James Wyland as recreation director for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash eighteen, authorizing the appointment of municipal alliance coordinator.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the reappointment of Patrick Scanlon as municipal alliance coordinator for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash nineteen, appointing substitute subcode officials.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the appointment of substitute electrical, plumbing, fire, and building subcode officials for the township of Lacy here partnering up with Burke Township to use as conflict and workload schedules.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Stand.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash twenty, appointing a public agency affirmative action officer.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Veronica Ray as public agency affirmative action compliance officer for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash twenty-one, appointing class one special officers.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing class one special law enforcement officers. Those are Matt Edwards, Christopher Triano, Kathy Carhart, and Cindy Smith Wayne.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash twenty-two, appointing class two special officers.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing class two special law enforcement officers. Those are Robert Campoli, Tyler Walsh, and Michael Cora.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash twenty-three, appointing school crossing guards.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing school crossing guards for the township of Lacy. Those are at the main event, and that are Michael E. Golf, Margaret Davis, Robert Trufer, Anthony Muniz, and Diane Boyle.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution.
Go ahead.
And warm.
Yep.
Resolution 2018 dash twenty-four, appointing a safety coordinator and an alternate.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Carrigan Marado as the township safety coordinator, and Dan McGeele as the alternate safety coordinator for the township of Lacy.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash twenty-five, appointing a representative and an alternate to municipal insurance fund.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Veronica Ray as the township representative, and Linda Pecaro Cabella as the township alternate representative to the Ocean County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund and the Municipal Excess Liability Joint Insurance Fund.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution 2018 dash twenty-six, appointing a representative and an alternate to the community development block grant committee.
Resolution Township of Lacy County, Washington State, New Jersey, appointing Linda Pecaro Cabella as the township's representative, and Veronica Ray as the alternate representative to the county's community development block grant committee.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-seven, appointing a member to the planning board as, as the mayor designated.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Stephen Kenneth as the mayor's designate on the Lacey Township Planning Board.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-eight, appointing a class-two member to the planning board.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Christopher Reed as the class-two member to the Lacey Township Planning Board.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-nine, appointing a class-three member to the planning board.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Gary Quinn as the class-three member to the Lacey Township Planning Board.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty, appointing a class-four member to the planning board.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Jeffrey Dossel as a class-four member to the Lacey Township Planning Board.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-one, appointing alternate member number one to the planning board.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Neil Marina as alternate number one to the Lacey Township Planning Board.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-two, appointing alternate member number two to the planning board.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing James Latalier as alternate number two to the Lacey Township Planning Board.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-three, appointing members to the zoning board of adjustment.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Marion Franco Craig Tamalo and Troy Burton as regular members to the zoning board on adjustment.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-four, appointing alternate member number two to the zoning board of adjustment.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing James Noller Jr. as alternate number one and Kathleen Decker as alternate number two on the Lacey Township zoning board of adjustment.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-five, appointing members to the board of health.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Ryan Griffin as a regular member to the board of health for the township of Lacey.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-six, appointing members to the environmental commission.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Robert P.A., Robert Behr, and Terry Stewart as regular members to the environmental commission for the township of Lacey.
Move.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-seven, appointing alternate member to the environmental commission.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Joe Gillis as alternate number one to the environmental commission for the township of Lacey.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-eight, appointing a member to the economic development commission.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Lyle Smith as the banking representative and David Most as the labor representative to the economic development commission for the township of Lacey.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash thirty-nine, appointing members to the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing Raphaelyne O'Neil as a regular member, Alan Baker as an alternate member to the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority.
Move. Second.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty, appointing members to the E.A.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing members to the American Utilities Act Advisory Board for the township of Lacey. Those members are Veronica Larrick, Andrew Petty, Craig Tamalo, Ina Lapinka, and John Malone to the board.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-one, appointing members to the solid waste advisory committee.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing members to the solid waste advisory committee. Those members are Rosemary Coffey, Lyle Smith, Bruce Connel, Dan McGill, Paul Cowan, Jack Noski, Donald Trapp, Peter Kurt Solow, and Mayor Julianne.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-two, appointing members to the beautification committee.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing members to the beautification committee. Those members are Eleanor Din, Lucille Michele, Lynn Salzold, Jim Barron, Kathy Barron, Betty Jean Noski, Holly Martin, Trish Burke, and Dan McGill.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-three, appointing members to the senior citizens recreation committee.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing members to the senior citizens recreation committee. Those members are Marie Krieger, Mary Jensen, and Fred Hand.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-four, appointing members to the senior citizens advisory committee.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing members to the senior citizens advisory committee. Those members are Mary Jensen, Marie Krieger, Mary Cameron, and Eleanor Din.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
And Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-five, appointing members to the veterans committee.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing members to the veterans committee. Those individuals are Bernard Snyder, Pete Forchester, Jim Wilson, Howard Tombs, John Malone, Ken Fenton, Tom Leza, Brian Holt, Thomas Patrick, William Moss, Bernard Novak, Michael Colmari, and James Renato Jr.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-six, appointing members to the municipal alliance committee.
I'm going to take a breathing here, because I have a long list. Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, appointing members to the municipal alliance committee for the township of Lacey. Those individuals are Reverend Linda Applegate, Chris Brown, Laura Carosia, Dorothy Klup, Robert Klup, Antoinette Connolly, Adrian DiPaolo, Marguerite Delambly, Patricia DeSavino, Regina DeSenza, Lisa Edgeworth, Lorraine Even, Thomas Faulkner, Christine Franzen, Jessica Franzen, Marcy Galia, Debbie Smith, Sharon Hoffman, Nancy Joyce, Peggy Sue Juliana, Rita Katsik, Marie Krieger, Donna McAvoy, Robin O'Brien, Mark Principato, Barbara Race, Margaret Mann, Judy Santucci, Ed Scanlon, Blake Scanlon, Bernard Scanlon, Kathy Scanlon, Fred Zavara, Monica Zavaro, Peggy Snyder, Gabrielle Spano, Rosa Stikes, Judy Surlak, Joe Tabafia, Laura Timoney, Colleen Tonkovich, Joan Topping, Gina Simmons, Karen Vincentini, and James Wyler.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-seven, authorizing the temporary budget for twenty eighteen.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, providing for the two thousand and eighteen temporary operating budget. This should get us through approximately the first quarter of the year at seven million five hundred seventy-two thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-eight, authorizing the deposit of public funds in New Jersey banks.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, authorizing the treasury deposit money in any bank savings, and loan or trust company having a place of business in the state of New Jersey and which is organized under the laws of the United States or the state of New Jersey. Those banks that are main depository is Ocean First Bank, Wee Too Business TD Bank, State of New Jersey Cash Management Fund, MBIA, Auckland Federal Bank, First Home Savings Bank, San Miller, Sun National Bank, Penn Federal, Shore Community, Wells Fargo, Barney Federal, Bank of America, PNC, Hudson City Savings, excuse me, that's M&amp;T Bank now, Santander, and Chase.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, and all of this is tied to Marcus Austin.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash forty-nine, establishing the interest rate on delinquent taxes.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, fixing the rate of interest to be charged on delinquent taxes for assessment.
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes. Resolution twenty eighteen dash fifty, providing for dates of township meeting and the official paper.
Resolution, township Lacey County, motion stated in Jersey, providing dates of township meeting and designating the official newspaper for the year two thousand and eighteen. The official newspaper will be The Beacon, is our main legal advertising asset for our professional Atlantic City press. Our meetings, again, are the second and fourth Tuesday, Thursdays of the month at seven P.M. With the exception, in the summer, we only do one meeting a month, which will be on the second Thursday, and the Tuesday before Thanksgiving is our meeting in November. Motion, please?
Move. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Kenneth?
Yes.
Mr. Kurt Solow?
Yes.
Mayor Julianne?
Yes.
And that finishes our agenda for today.
Now we open the floor to Republic of Congress.
Yes, I just say, if you can pull that into the middle, you can stay and add us for the record, please.
My name is Peggy Sue Juliano, and I just wanted to say that you're very lucky, you're going to have that manager mayor, and his mom and dad would be so proud of him, and they're up there looking at you and they're going to watch you, so don't you worry about nothing, okay?
Any other copy of mine?
Yeah, I got one.
I'm going to give you today.
I used to be in the microphone. My name's Dick Juliano. That man has taught me a lot throughout my twenty-four years on earth. He's done a lot for not only us, our family, our family too, so I'm excited to see what he got. He's a smart dude, so I'm excited to see what he got coming for us. Thank you.
Come on, Marissa.
She's like getting filthy in tears in no time.
She's a quiet. Marie Krieger. And Donna Pop.
You want to go see something? Microphone? No, it's there.
Second. Second. Um, next, I'm glad you used this, this is a little flow after all. Comments from the committee. I think we're going to start with Stephen Kenneth.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank all the family and friends that came out, took the time to this holiday to support us here. Next, I'd like to thank Pete for the great job he did as mayor. He's a great asset to Lacey Township as both a committeeman and a resident. And most important, I would like to congratulate Nick on becoming mayor. He and his family have been very active members in the community and have greatly contributed for the betterment of Lacey Township. I'm looking forward to working with him and the rest of the committee to maintain the quality of living here in Lacey Township. Congratulations, Nick.
Mr. McDonald? No, I'm going to... Peter. Thank you very much, Nicholas, and congratulations. I'm looking very forward to working with Nick. He's been a great man in our community for a very long time. I've got to know him really well over the last four years. A lot of work has been done, kindnesses by Nick and I think a lot of people up here. Nobody works in a vacuum. We can't do it without the people. There are many faces and friends that are in front of us. These are heartfelt comments. We sit here today, and soon we'll break bread, and it's the new year. I want to thank, again, everyone from the bottom of my heart for all the work they've done, in particular, police, recreation, municipal alliance, the work to keep our community safe, the work to keep our community prosperous, moving forward in the land use. I want to pledge my support to our mayor. I know he's a good man. Everybody up here, elected and unelected, are people that we trust implicitly, that are around my house and around my family. I know them. I know I'm a good judge of character. I'll be here. It's been a great, great honor to be your mayor. Without the folks up here, without the folks in front of me and the folks within your shop, when I shout my voice, it wouldn't have happened. I look forward to a very long career sitting up here and providing service to the community. Nick, I will tell you, Mayor Julianne, I trust you. I'm going to be there to support you. If you leave me, it's going to be a telephone call, and God bless you, and God will be welcoming you on the side.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to stop by thanking Peter Kurt Solow for his year as mayor. You know, I told you over and over again, you did a great job. I told you last year at this point, it's going to be quick, and it's going to be something. You've accomplished a lot. You have a lot of good memories. I mean, we certainly were proud of what you've done, and you're very proud of it, but it's going to be a body of work, so I'm sure you'll be very happy. I'm sure your family is going to be happy to see you. We'll spend a little more time at home now, and I certainly wish you the best. I know we're going to work well together coming up into the new year. To Mayor Julianne, you know, I can't say enough. You know how I feel. You know how proud I am of you, and, you know, I think there's no doubt you're going to do a fantastic job. You've been certainly trained for the last three years, and seeing you get re-elected and having the opportunity to do this is really, you know, something that's very important to me. I want to, you know, thank your family. You know, I think everyone knows, you know, we talk about it a lot, this isn't a job that we do as ourselves. It's a lot of time taken away from families and a lot of stuff that, you know, you have participated in as well as us, so, you know, just bear with them. They'll actually be ours when we, when you're in the public office.
Why are you coming your way?
We do have delegations here. I know that Nikki has delegated to one of you, to the former mayor, so I say... That would kind of go Peter's way, so we can leave your emotions out for now. Truly, you know, very proud. It's been a great job. Tim, congratulations on becoming deputy mayor. Again, you know, you're welcome for the position. You're going to do a great job this year, and you're transitioning over when you become mayor of this governing body. You know, we work very well as a committee, and we, you know, we kind of, you know, integrate each other. Where somebody comes up short, somebody else picks up the slack, and it's really truly been an honor to work with these four people up here. And I know that, you know, we're in good shape this year, and we're in great shape in the next this year and the following years as well. Laura, you know, and family, you know, again, it's, you know, it's something that he's going to be putting a lot more time in. I think Nikki will be working hand in hand together as mayor, deputy mayor, representing the face of this committee, and I know we've all been able to talk, talk once. I know Laura, you were happy when they, as you say, they continue funding back to work after the surgery. I can promise you, you can have a lot more free time. It's something that I'll really appreciate, though. You know, I'm really happy for Tim and for you guys, you know. Certainly, you know, I think it'll be a good ride. I'll enjoy it for the future. So, put my glasses on. Started this year as a governor, but read without glasses, and it's changed over the years. I want to thank all the volunteers that are here today. You know, we saw a lot of names read over the course of the agenda, and the professionals that have come to join us today. What we do, it wouldn't be possible without all the people behind the scenes that does the work, whether it be professionals appointed to the position for somebody that just gives their time, right, for this to here. That's what makes Lacey successful and, you know, makes us a very good city up here, so, you know, each and every one of you, thank me for all you do, and, you know, we look forward to working with everyone for another year. Two people, well, a couple people that certainly make the whole thing, you know, work, the whole circle work is Veronica, and Lauren's not yet there, but we do have Andrew, who's from New Jersey's office as well, our attorney, our administrator, are the key components that I think Nikki said, you know, keep us in line and keep us on the right tracks. If we don't go outside of the lines, you know, we're kind of getting lost track. Nikki, that'll be probably one thing that you'll see as we move forward. You'll be on your back a lot, I'm sure. You know, I can't say enough about, you know, our legal team, as well, the work that they've done over the years, and we look forward to twenty eighteen. On a personal note, I have to thank my wife, Linda. You know, Linda's been with me, you know, like I say, it's not only the candidates, it's not only the person sitting up here, it's the family behind the scenes, my wife, the children, like everyone else, has experienced a lot of time where I'm away from the family. Linda knows, you know, that it's part of my job, and she's always there by my side. Nikki and I have talked before we came out here, we've both created about forty years in our relationships, and, you know, if they haven't walked away from us yet, they're not walking. Linda, I truly appreciate it. I love you, honey, and thank you for everything you can do. Last thing, I just wanted to extend a very special thank to somebody that's always here, of course, that really makes everything we do here come through in your family room, your living room, our cabin, you know, with Tom, who's from Lacey High School. Give him around the wall. Tom, he's the young son here. He, you know, he's got five, five old children, right? Four, four. Lost one a month's way. Like, you know, it, whether the weather is good, bad, absolutely freezing cold, like it is, but Tom is always here. If you can't get the kids to come out on a specific day, he's here, he'll be for us, making sure that everything we do here is transparent and goes out there, everybody watching TV at home. So, Tom, I can't thank you enough. You're always here, of course, and you truly do a great job. On that note, I'll end it, because I'm sure that the mayor and deputy mayor are a long way to go, you know what I mean? Let them take over, but I certainly wish everyone to be happy and help the, instead of making, look forward to working with everybody yourself. Thank you, everybody.
My name is Tom. Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank my family. I'm not easy to look. I'll be the first one to admit that. And so, I think they're, they're kind of happy that I'm going to be around the house a lot more. I also want to thank Peter Kurt Solow, former mayor. Two thousand seventeen was challenging, and he led us through that. Pete, you did a great job.
Tim, he's a lot coming from there, while he's...
And, you know, Mayor Julianne, I think two thousand eighteen, we're going to have some tough challenges, and I hope not for too many of you to get through it, and we will through it, and I wish you lots of luck. I'm here for you. For all our supporters out there, thank you. It's, this is, and I said this before, it is a state honor and a privilege to say, and it's not possible without you people. You believe in us, and hopefully, we deliver. And I think that's very, very important. The rest of my gang up here, we're going to have a great two thousand and eight year. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Wow, I guess it's left to many times. He's off the ballot. I'd like to start off with thanking Chris Connors, Senator Connors. I've gotten to know him over the years, and I did know his father, Len Connors, very well, as I had a business in Manahawken, and I got to know Len. I appreciate him coming to swear me in. That was an honor to him, really, as a mayor, to have him here and his nice words. Chris, Gassman, Gary Conney, thank you very much. I'm allowed to say these things, but thank you for handling that campaign and moving in some direction we have to go. To the walkers, the baggers, the sign people, picnic people with tall, then a call, and everybody that handled that, and the Republican Club, for all your hard work and support, I want to thank you. I would like to thank all the volunteer organizations in town. You all know, I can name them all up, but we have the best in this town, and we all work together and get everything done. I would like to thank the fire department, the police, the DPW, for all their hard work and support in the community throughout the whole year. I'm a pretty short guy, so I'll keep it short as we go, as I'm following in Mr. Kenneth's footsteps. That's great. But no, I'm honored to be your mayor, and to work with this committee up here, Veronica, in which Lauren is not here, but to work with Lauren, to make Lacey, as I mentioned when I was running, to make Lacey greater. The people in the past have made us great. We need to go, we're going to just keep on going and make Lacey even greater. We have a great team, as I know they said here, and I would like to thank personally Mayor Kurt Solow for everything you've done. A great year. I learned a lot from you. I've learned a lot of your speaking, too. I'm starting to learn that a little bit better. His words of wisdom are always very much appreciated. Mr. Kenneth, thank you. All your knowledge that I've learned, and maybe you might not think that, but I think about that land use and everything else, and between Gary Quinn and yourself, I've learned a lot over that. I appreciate that very much, no doubt. Mr. Quinn, this happened a long time ago, and this is a little bit special, because many years ago, I was asked by my mother-in-law, and Mr. Quinn, to run for this township committee. It became an honor. When I first thought about it, and I said, well, I think, I don't know about, I think I'm ready for it, and Gary talked to me, and my mother-in-law, I want to thank you very much. It's turned into be what I really wanted to do, and to move forward. Your wisdom, Gary, and everything else, I really appreciate as we move along. I know I'm going to, I've learned a lot from you in three years, and everybody else on this committee, and I look forward to more. Deputy Mayor McDonald, thank you very much. I know you're going to have my back, and in everything that we do together, we'll get this town through twenty eighteen into the next, next phase of what we need to do, and I thank you very much. Last but not least, I can, as she spoke, my father, my mother, I wish she was here, to be proud, no doubt. I thank you. Forty years I've been married to the same lady, I mean, I appreciate everything that you've been through. I'm not the easiest person, like they said, get along with you. Things change. You get more wisdom, you get more aggravated in what you have to do. I want to thank you very much for being the love of my life, all these years. My mother-in-law, thank you very much. I appreciate all your knowledge. You've not only been a mother-in-law to me, you've been a mother.
My pleasure.
So far, we do. And I listen to everything you say. You might not think that, but I do. I listen to everything you say. I'm a crazy. To my children, everybody would say this, they have the best. I know I have the best, no doubt in my mind. My son, I'm very proud of you. I support everything you do, as you know, and I will continue to do that. I will always, I know this job will take a lot, not seeing you, but I will be there to back you in every phase of what you want to do in life. My daughter, you know how I feel. I'm very proud of you. First, probably, in our immediate family, graduated college, and my God, that's amazing. We love you. We support you. To my little man. My little man, Allen, over there, he's become a, he's definitely become a family member to us. We, we love him dearly. He's a, he's a good boy. Yes, and he's got the red shirt and the tie on today.
Ties.
For Mr. Nick, right? He did that for Mr. Nick? No, thank you very much. And to the residents and the people of Lacey Township, thank you this year for having your faith in me. I won't let you down. I will do everything possible to, to support you in anything you want to do. Please, we're all available here. You can reach us at any time. Pick up the phone, leave a message here, or people that know what my phone number is, reach out to me, and I will be there for you. Like I said before, this is an honor. I want to thank everybody again, and I think I can say this later, as we're going afterward. Afterwards, I would invite everybody down to the captain's inn. We're going to have something to eat, and in fact, some crockery, which we have, but I want to thank you again, and that's it.